I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. The first up is we're going to do recognition of our Board of Education reps from Massey High School. So we'd like to recognize Michelle Atney, Molly Carrero, and Molly Doc for their service for the 2018-19 school year. So if you can join us over here, we have little gifts for you.
We have Anna designed gift cards to thank each one of you.
Wonderful job.
Thank you.
I'll make sure I get the right policies here.
Molly.
Thank you. Should've had my glasses on.
That's Michelle.
Thank you.
And Molly Doc.
Thank you. I think we can get a picture with you guys, too. Great. Great job girls.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The Board of Education would like to acknowledge a donation from the Shelton Monroe Rapids Swim Team in the amount of $14,930. The donation was made to repair the Massey Pool Platforms, and this work has already been completed. If you remember, they donated last year the starting blocks, and when they were going to do those installation, they, we found that there was other items on the platforms that needed to be fixed first. So the Shelton Monroe Rapids actually donated the money to fix those platforms for the new, the new blocks to be done. But they're not here this evening, right?
No, they're not.
Okay. All right, we will move on to the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented? Thank you, Shannon. Do I have a second? Thank you, David. I'm going to let Jack introduce Frank Conley, who is our interim Director of Finance and Operations.
So we're very fortunate to have Frank Conley joining us. He's got an expansive background. He's a retired Director of Finance and has been in numerous districts in his retirement. I was just teasing him about it's really not retirement now, is it Frank?
No, this past week is not in retirement.
And he's also got experience with municipal government and HR, and really, he's been a wealth of knowledge and has been a welcome addition to our team, so it's great to have him here.
And we'll be hearing from Frank a little further into the agenda. And do you want to also discuss the new physical education teacher that we have hired?
Sure. Joe and I had the pleasure of meeting with Jenna Rice last week, and she, too, comes to us with some great experience. She's actually been a physical education teacher in the Department of Defense system, and she's not only taught physical education, but has also taught some dance. So looking forward to having her on board. She'll be a welcome addition.
We had a nice opportunity to kind of test drive her a little bit. She filled in for Stephanie Van De Venter at the middle school during Stephanie's maternity, so it was a nice, nice auto test for us.
Right, I saw that she was with us for a few months doing that.
And she continued on, she continued on, before that she was in as a permanent sub, and she's been, or as a, yeah, as a sub, and she's still on with us as a, as a regular sub.
Perfect, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the Consent Agenda as presented? Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and we have our Massey School Representatives. Girls, take it away.
Hi, so I have a sports update to start. So for boys track, they will be competing in the SWCs on Wednesday. So Connor Mahoney is seeded first for the 200 meter, Aiden McShane is seeded first for 100 meter hurdle, and Jake McFarland is seeded first in the triple jump, so we are excited to hear those results. Girls track, they went eight and five in the season, and they're coming out third in the Colonial Division, so they hope to place well at SWCs as well. Boys lacrosse, they lost first round of SWCs against Joe Barlow, but they will be advancing on to states. And girls lacrosse as well, lost first round against Joe Barlow, but will be advancing on to states. Baseball has the SWC tournament tomorrow against New Fairfield, and that is all.
Seniors will be presenting their capstone projects on Thursday, so there are a wide variety of topics, from law enforcement to veterinary sciences. So wish the seniors best of luck, and maybe we'll see some of you there as judges. Last Friday, Massey held its annual Physics Olympics, where the AP Physics II students create physics-based challenges, like building paper towers or creating a catapult, for the other physics students to complete. It was a fun and educational day, and we all enjoyed meeting Mr. Schmidt's new puppy.
And then after Physics Olympics, my prom was held on Friday at the Water View, and it was a huge success, just like the rest of the student body. Molly, Michelle, and I had a lot of fun dancing, singing, and taking photos in the photo booth. Around nine o'clock, we've now, like, a surprise guest come, and then it was, I don't know how to explain it, but it was like a huge robot.
Yeah, on stilts.
And so, yeah, on stilts. And so he came in, like shot water vapor, and it's like got everyone to the dance floor, which was a lot of fun. And then, so overall, it was like a huge success. And then earlier, in the, in the, a previous Board of Ed meeting, the new breathalyzers were approved, so those went, we had four stations, it went really smoothly, everyone got in, and there was no complaints by the students. Also, post-prom was a blast. The theme was USA Road Trip, and like students came up to Massey, met with huge signs, met with a retro Beetle car, and then walked into a, like wonderfully decorated facility, where there was a bunch of tar card readers, there were bouncy houses, plenty of food to entertain, to entertain the students until 3:00 AM. So a huge thank you to anyone, to anyone and everyone who helped run those events and made them a success.
Good, thank you.
It boggles my mind how much work has to go into making that post-prom happen.
Oh, it does, it's crazy.
Yeah, and I'm not artistic or crafty at all, so it's just, it's like, yeah, it's awesome, right?
Yeah, no, it looked beautiful.
Yeah.
I mean, they had the Hard Rock Cafe, and they actually had a front end of the car sticking out, like hung up, it was amazing.
And then the Hard Rock Cafe had kiss signs and rolling stones.
No, it was, it was, and they had the Beetle, a real Beetle bug, right, right in the front part when you walked in, and, I know, they did, everybody did a great job. I don't know, they're very artistic.
Yeah.
I just sit and like tag the kids as they're walking with the bands, you know, for registration, like that's about as much as I do, but.
I do a little bit.
Yeah.
I'm so glad it's a success, and the kids enjoy it, that's awesome.
No, they, everybody, you know, there was a lot of kids that came to post-prom. You know, I remember in previous years, a lot of kids didn't come, but it was a good number.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was busy, like we got, you know, slammed at the beginning, they just kept coming, so.
Yeah, good. And you guys had good weather, too.
Yeah.
We got fair weather.
Great, thank you. I think this will be your last meeting, right? They come into the June meeting?
Usually they don't. But you're more than welcome.
They got their gifts and not coming back.
Yeah, I think this will be your last meeting, girls.
Well, miss you guys, yeah.
Thank you, well, good luck.
I'll be here next year.
Molly will still be here, but the other Molly and Michelle, good luck. Where are you girls going?
I'm going to Villanova University.
I'm going to UConn.
Okay. Well, good luck and congratulations.
You've done a wonderful job.
The Molly and Michelle will see you at graduation. The other Molly will see you next year. All right, great. Does anybody else have any other reports? David, I know you do.
Okay. The Pension Committee met on Thursday, May 9th at Town Hall. The pensions were reviewed by FIA, very strong quarter one, so that was good news, no votes were taken, so it was pretty much just an update on the accounts. Also, on Thursday, May 9th, there was a Health and Safety, Security, and School Climate Committee meeting here at Massey. The individual schools updated the committee on the drills that they have been conducting, and also updating the committee on the progress they're making, just tweaking safety plans, so all is going well.
Good, thank you. Does anybody have any other committee reports? All right. I know we're going to see CES, a few of us, on Friday at 9:00 AM, so we'll have a report next time about CES. Anybody else? All right, we will move on to public participation, if anybody would like to talk. All right, we will move on to our report of our superintendent.
So the first two items, the review of the Fund Activity Statement and the Budget Update, Items A and B, I'm going to do together with some of Frank's help, too. And firstly, in that, regarding those items, we had a follow-up to the Board of Ed Special Meeting after we finished last week. We went into the Board of Finance. Board of Finance did act upon approving the request for transferring funds from the 10-248 A account, so that's in process to be able to offset special education shortfall this year. So that is in the works. We've also been working on insurance. Currently, it looks like our current shortfall for this year in insurance is about $584,000. Frank, do you want to give some specifics on that, or a little backup on that?
Yes, the, the financial report that you have shows a deficit. It's on page 14, the very top line item, count 752800, Medical and Drug Insurance, showing a deficit of $358,926. As of today, you're $758,926 deficit. We met with our insurance consultant, and he's going to be speaking shortly to the board, dealing with the additional claims that are coming in because you're self-funded. And so we're estimating that there's substantial amount of claims still to come in, so we do anticipate a deficit in this account. So we are looking at other counts to help offset that, and we did find some savings in there. We're now going through all the balances in the accounts, trying to see where you're going to be, but I still anticipate a shortfall in the health insurance account by June 30, so some steps will have to be taken. The town, in its fund balance, and the fund balance of a town is basically its savings account. The town has designated $500,000 already from last year's savings account or fund balance, so it's called Designated Fund Balance. Even though it's been designated, apparently under your charter, that still has to go to a town meeting. So there's $500,000 looking to be applied to this account, and we're still going to be a little bit short, so we're, I will have more updates as we go through, but we do still anticipate a shortfall in that, in that account.
And then similarly, we're looking at the 1920 insurance account, and we also see a shortfall there. We've had Frank for a relatively short period of time, so we're really trying to get a good handle on the numbers, to know exactly what that is. So more will follow about that with details and specifics on the exact amount that we anticipate there. The other thing that we've been working on with Frank's help is there's a handout in front of you, and there were some over on the bookcase for the public as well, and I have a couple more extras that people need later. And as we've looked at our current special education expenditure process for excess cost, the top half of the page shows how that works. So when there's expenditures we need to be made currently, they get applied to those two yellow boxes. So they would be applied on the left there to our Special Education Operating Budget, that's our BOE budget, or they're applied to the grant account that you see on the far right. The grant account is paid for by excess cost funds. But the challenge with this is we have two different places to draw funds, so when finance submits PO, they could go to one of two places, when special ed submits a PO, they could go to one of two places. It's, it's an overly complex model, and this has been in place for quite some time. Frank had the suggestion that we look at revising it to what you see below this line, and it's a very simple model. There's one place where all POs and expenditures go to this one yellow box, and then as excess cost funds come in, they get credited to that one place. The other thing that we added here, just to kind of reinforce this model and why it's a good one, is the language from the Connecticut General Statutes, and you see that on the bottom left, that says, "The town treasurer is required to credit the board's expenditure account in the amount of the state funds that are attributable to expenses beyond the board's itemized budget estimate." So it's supposed to be a credit to the account. So by having all of the expenditures in one place, it's a very simple credit of the excess cost funds towards our expenditures. So by doing this, we're all looking at one place to see where we are, rather than two places, which gets to be more cumbersome and less clear.
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
So the one last step in the journey with this is we're going to run this by our auditors, too, just to make sure that they're on, on board with us. One of the things that Frank shared today is he's been in eight different districts, and, you know, he's seen this work in other places, so I would hope our auditors are on board with this new plan, and then it would be something we'd be looking to get for, get in place by July 1. So as we go into next year, we'll have this ready to go. All right?
Jack, is this something you can do with our consent, or does it have to go to Board of Finance, the accounts?
No, it's just a general operational, one of the things we do, so we can just, we're, we're sharing it with you informationally and for feedback, but we can just go ahead and do it.
Good.
Okay? And then, as mentioned before, we're going to CES on Friday, and I'm including this under budget because part of what we've been talking about is where do our funds go? So we're going to be looking at a program where there's outplaced students, and taking a look specifically at what the dollars purchase, and have a better understanding of what that looks like and how that all works. So that will be nine o'clock Friday morning. Right now, I believe it's Alan, Jerry, Donna, and myself. If others want to go, there's, we could absolutely add more. So if you're still interested, just let me know, and we'll add you to that visit. And those were the major items I had on budget. If there's questions, or Frank, is there's anything else we want to add right now? All right, if there's other questions at any point, just let me know. We'll move on right now, though. The next item, letter C, MEA Agreement to Shift a Half Day to the Prom Date for 2020. So in really good collaboration between Jeff Seymour, Marie Blake, and Jake Greenwood, and Joe, there's some good conversations about how to reshape next year's calendar in a way that will enhance instructional time and keep our students and families happy, all in one shot. And what this is, is taking our December eighth grade open house date, which is a half day by contract, and shifting that from that date to the prom date, because what happens on prom is kids leave early, they go home to get ready. That's the realities of a high school tradition. So rather than students doing this on their own, we plug the half day in there, we have the half day anyway, so we convert the date of the eighth grade open house to a full day. Sorry, seniors, this is for next year. You guys probably left there early anyways, right?
Yeah.
So for next year, that'll be a half day, no guilt, and, and, you know, be, our families will be happier, and instructional time will be better. So really, it's a win-win, and I want to thank everybody involved for making that happen. All right, so just an FYI on that. And then SAT results, we've got some really good news here, and that link will open for you now. That was mistaken on my part, I didn't have the permission set correctly, so I just corrected that a moment ago. So a quick rundown on our SAT results, and these are initial results. We don't have all the details yet, but wanted to share what we have just received, so you're informed. So the good news here is for our current juniors, the class of 2020, they, their combined score was 1139, which was a 10-point increase from the previous year's SAT, and the highest combined score for Massey students since the inception of the school-based SAT four years ago. So that was really a great thing to see our students achieve at that level. And then similarly, for percentile, they were at 60% at or above goal. That's a 10% increase from the previous year, and again, a four-year high for us since the inception of the test. In math, 573 average score, 16-point increase from the previous year's SAT, and 72 at goal, 13% increase, there was a major change in the performance. And then in LA, slightly down, but remember, our ELA scores tend to be very high. So not a surprise there, we're going to see a little bit of fluctuation. 84% maintain the same percent at or above the goal from the previous year. So that was for our juniors. And then in looking at cohort data, that means students moving from the PSAT to the SAT, what we found there was a 65, 65-point increase in the combined score, and again, greatest increase from the PSAT to the SAT in four years' time. Math, 47, 47-point increase, greatest increase in math in four years, LA, an 18-point increase. And then for a class of 2021, our sophomores, total increase of 41 points, math increase of 16, LA increase of 25. So you can see all the way through some really good gains for our students.
What was their combined numbers?
1041 for, for the, this current sophomore class.
Thanks, Joe. And then lastly, the class of 2022, our current freshmen, and if you do recall, last year's, when they were eighth graders, our, the SPEC scores there were not as high as we had hoped for. The really good news here is that they are performing at the same level currently as last year's, as the current sophomores when they were freshmen last year. So it means that really, there's been some significant gains there. And 80%, 87% are at or above the benchmark for LA, 71% at or above the benchmark for math, and really, all the way around, some great, great outcomes here. And a credit to everybody involved, Joe, Jake, Kevin Welch, Mike Crowley, our assistant principals, our teachers, a great team effort, and really some wonderful results there, so.
And what's their combined score?
1,000. They tied the year before, which had been the highest in school history.
Thank you.
So.
Any questions on that at all? Okay. And next, just a thank you to everyone in the community for their support for Jackie Hollow. As you know, the last couple weeks have been hard weeks for us, and it really is a testament to this community that all of us rally around these very important events that occur in supporting each other and making sure that our kids are protected and supported in the way that they should be, as well as our staff. And really, you know, it's adversity that really shows our truest colors, and I think the truest colors of Monroe are great colors. So I just want to thank everybody for all that they've done for all of our students and staff.
All right, anybody have any questions for Jack? All right, we will move on to presentations. We have Rob Fitzpatrick, who's Senior Vice President from Brown and Brown here, who's going to talk about our insurance.
Exciting stuff.
Yes, Frank touched upon it a little, but Rob is going to go into a lot more detail as to what's occurring.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
How's it going? Just give me one second, I'll get myself all set. We are, we're facing some difficult times here. The good news is that you're getting out of the insurance business, right? And you're moving over to the state plan, where the state becomes the insurer, so the risk is now being pushed off to the state. Consistently, the Board of Ed has had some serious difficulties with high claims. Nothing is changing on that. Since 2015, with the exception of maybe five months, you've had high claims hit your claim line every month. We recently had another $200,000-plus claim come in just recently last month, and for the year, we're looking at, excuse me one second, through April 30th, 801,000 in claims reimbursements coming back to us. We're projecting out to be just shy of a million dollars in high claim reimbursements. So the population continues to have problems with their health, and it's unfortunate, but again, like I said, the most important factor is that this risk, this liability, which the board currently has responsibility for, will be pushed off to the state partnership plan, which we all talked about at length, to go there for next year. Some benefits for the teachers to access some care at lower costs instead of through the high deductibles, and also the ability to eventually, over a period of time, go through a wellness program, a wellness initiative program. So hopefully, over the next couple of years, some of those claims will subside, and the population will be healthier. In the meantime, we have set some budget numbers for you, and when we look at those budget numbers, one of the things we did discover was there were some shortages in some of the projections from the prior year to this year as well. We don't know why that is. Our numbers are pretty consistent, and with the exception of an IBNR report, which we gave the board back in December, there's one adjustment to that, which was the high claim for an additional $200,000. So our incurred but not reported liability, those are claims that have been incurred by the employees but have to be processed through the claims account over the next couple of months. We're looking at $880,000 incurred but not reported liability. When we last reported on this in December, it was about $600,000. And an additional high claim hit, that's why it's on the, on the bottom line here. So when we look at next year's budget, we have our fixed cost number from the state, we know what that number is, then we have to account for the $880,000. So that's going to be your total picture of what you're looking at for your next year's claims bottom line number. Okay? Any questions on that? I hate bearing such bad news, but I need to do this, I need to give you the facts, folks. When we look at the numbers, you know, we were working pretty much all day, and my team has been working on the weekends just to try to find what the, what the trend is, where we're going with this. And looking at this, the, like I said, the best, the best opportunity here for this board is to get out of this insurance business that you've been in, pass the risk off into the pool with the state employees, it'll have a better outcome. Over a period of time, it should subside, and your population should get healthier. Okay? The good news is that the employee should have access to providers at lower cost to them, because they have a high deductible plan, so hopefully, we'll be taking advantage of that over the next couple of years that we're in the state employee pool population. Any questions? Yes, sir?
Um, has your organization or ours looked into the causes of these claims? Are these slips and falls, are these health issues, is this?
So we started to do some data mining, and you have, I can't get into specific stuff, but you have an awful lot of cancer, and it's employee cancer. And it's not dependents so much, but mostly employees.
Yeah, that would explain the high, high cost.
Yes, it would. And it's an awful lot. I've never seen, in 31 years of doing this, this type of work, this many high claims consistently since 2015. The exceptions are about six months, you didn't have a high claim hit, every month you have.
It would be interesting to, without getting into privacy issues, but it would be interesting to drill down on that more and more and more, you know, whether it's smoking, you know, the causes of that exposure to issues.
Several different types of cancers, there's not one really that stands out. I can name breast cancer, it's obviously very common here, but we're not seeing, there are a couple of different other issues, but primarily cancers are the leading driver. So when you look at those high claims, keep in mind, we have an awful lot of number of claims below our stop-loss threshold, and those are cancer-related, too. So, okay.
In 31 years, you've never seen so many?
High claims, ever. I think, Frank, you can say that about looking at from your side of the house on health insurance claims, how many high claims we have consistently, year over year. When you look at the claim report that I did?
Yeah, yeah. I'll have to take a look at that, yeah.
Yeah, when, when, so we tracked claims, we went way back to June of 2015, and you'll see the red line straight through, with the exception of six months since June 2015, a high claim.
Did you look prior to that, or just that's?
We did it back to June 2015, we felt that we might as well stop there, but we have the data, we can go back to, I think, 2010.
I wonder, what, I wonder if it was like in 2010 to 2015, if that was similar?
We'll take a look. All right, we'll have that prepared for your next meeting. It's easy enough.
You know, Rob, I don't know how to ask this either, and I'm, I'm not thinking smoking, and I, you know, if I'm off-base, it's not centered around one school, we're not looking at a sick school here or anything, are we?
No, I don't have it by school, there's no way I will know that.
It's, I'm sorry, that's where my mind went.
I already asked those questions.
Environmental?
I asked that privately to Rob, like, is this a trend we need to be concerned about, like something is going on?
That's what I was getting at, is let's find the root causes so we can work better on prevention.
I can't tell you if it's environmental or not. I don't get a breakdown of who that individual is, I don't get a breakdown of what location they're at. I don't get that kind of data.
Rob, what about other clients? Do you have any other school systems or anything?
We have 72 in state.
Okay, and we're standing out?
I asked him this question last week, we're actually number one.
Number one, on board? Number one, on boards of Ed.
We don't want to be number one.
On boards of Ed, you're number one. You have another fifth county town that is, a town side, that is right there with you. Actually worse on the claim dollar per employee per month. But from a board of Ed side, Monroe is number one.
But how many school systems, how many?
There's a hundred and thirty-nine school systems in the state of Connecticut with ninety, ninety-one, no, I'm sorry, eighty-nine board benefit plans. Because there's regional school districts, so regionals pulled together. So as far as the, and I can only speak positively of the seventy-two that we represent. I also have data from a lot of other towns and boards of Ed. You guys are consistently top three. And I'm talking the last three years in a row. So again, the story of my message, good thing you're getting out of the insurance business.
Would it not behoove us to find out that it makes sure that it's not environmental? Seeing as we are extraordinarily, I mean, make sure that this is not, hopefully that this is an anomaly and not a trend?
So.
I know, I mean, I understand you don't get to see it, but does someone see or able to tell? Without getting into privacy issues, where, if there is a place where that is a higher percentage than others?
Trying to think if we'll be able to access some of that data. I think, I think it's important that we start with the types of cancer issues and then drill down from there. I don't know how much access to that information we can actually get without infringing on someone's privacy rights.
One question, we talked about this a little bit earlier today. The, one of the things that might help is if you knew if all, if there were a lot of the same kinds of cancers, then that says something about.
That we can, we can find that out specifically, that we get that data.
Versus if it was a lot of different kinds of cancers, it would tell you something else.
That's where my mind went, Jack, right away. I'm sorry I thought that way, but you know.
Yeah, it's an important question.
You know what, to that question, I've been involved with Monroe Board of Ed in one way or another.
For a long time.
For a very long time. And even back when my dear friend Kathy Cool was president of the C E A, she had brought up that issue many years ago. Didn't have much credence, but now when you look at it in hindsight, it may be something, and I know budgets are not good, having an environmental study, I don't know. I'm not recommending that now. Let's look at the claims data from what we can decipher for you.
That's fair enough in the beginning.
Let's take baby steps and we'll work it up from there.
Yeah, I think if we were to take a look at the claims data and see, is there a pattern there that would tell us something? If there's not a pattern there, that would tell us something too, right?
And also look at the town as a whole, the state as a whole. I know Connecticut has high breast cancer rates of the country. So what's the comparison?
The breast cancer rate is tied to the population taking better care of itself and access to good quality healthcare facilities.
And that's one other place where we'll be in a more beneficial spot with the state partnership plan in that preventative is now required.
They have the health enhancement program, which all the employees must participate within the first year. And they will go through wellness initiatives and they'll have access to more services under that program.
Which makes sense. One personal story, I had a very, very busy week last week. My physical was scheduled late in the day on one day. And I was like, ah, normally I would not go. Thought to myself, nope, I'm going to have the health compliance next year. I got to get it in. And quite honestly, if I didn't have that there, it wouldn't have happened.
You have a timeframe, Jack.
I know.
Eighteen months, right, Rob?
I don't know about eighteen.
It's eighteen months.
Yes, that is eighteen months, you are absolutely right.
It's eighteen months.
Yep, because you got up until the renewal of the following year. That is correct.
Boy, you jump ahead there, Zammer.
I wanted to get it out of the way.
Are you waiting for the last possible?
Yeah, I wait for month seventeen.
So looking forward, we're on a fixed cost rate basis, so that's going to certainly help out. But again, please keep in mind, you still have an incurred but not reported liability. As of today, I'm projecting, well, we're projecting, my team, eight hundred eighty thousand. It could change because your consistency, your propensity for high claims keeps popping up. So I can't guarantee that's where it's going to end up.
This goes through.
Is this trending, continuing to trend up?
Yeah, we just had a high claim at this month with two hundred and five thousand. But that high claim had already hit the stop loss attachment point previously. So it's not coming into the bottom line, it's a straight reimbursement. It's.
We're not giving away personal information, is that like a recurrence? Is that why?
It's someone who's already hit the high claim point previously during the school year and had another high claim. So two in one year.
Right, meaning they already hit stop loss, so insurance picks up that additional cost that's not on us.
Our, just so I can explain to everyone, give you the foundation. We have an individual stop loss and we have an aggregate stop loss. Our individual stop loss is at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per claim per individual.
For how, for what period of time?
For the period of July first through June thirtieth, each contract you've claimed. Okay, so that individual had a secondary high claim come in. He's already, or she's already hit that a hundred and seventy-five thousand on a prior claim. And it happens quite often.
Any other questions?
Concerns. Know this, that you folks all know that we brought Jay Fiorello, who was the consultant from your prior team, onto my team here. Between Jay and myself, we have, we've been part of this insurance plan for over fifteen years. So we know all the moving parts, we know all the moving pieces. Jay and I looked at this and we both individually underwrote the case where we were over the weekend just to get it fresh in our minds. He and I were less than twenty thousand dollars apart in our projections.
Wow.
The numbers are spot on. We're very comfortable in saying that. And I think we're very consistent with our numbers year over year. And we fall within a window of about three percent difference from what your actuals are to where we projected it would be.
That's anticipating in, like a trending up, is that anticipating that extra expense?
Yeah, we accounted for the trend. So if we, if we were just to take the ten months of claims at eight hundred and one thousand and project it going forward at nine sixty-two for the twelve months, we're thinking probably a million, million forty-four.
So you're accounting for that. So like the questions or the concerns would be like, we look back to two thousand and fifteen, could we look back to two thousand and ten? And I don't, I don't really see, I don't know. I hope there's a privacy issue involved with trying to target, is it, if it's looking at the additional information?
Well, there's a couple, couple of things at play. And I also want you to be aware of this. It's in my opinion that, I don't know if you're aware, that Cigna was on the purchase block. Anthem was trying to acquire Cigna. And I feel that during that acquisition period, Cigna did not keep up its contract negotiations with its providers. And therefore their discounts had suffered a little bit. In the same token, they've acquired Express Scripts, which was our pharmaceutical company. The deal with Express Scripts has improved our pharmacy numbers. So when we talked about the overall cost of the pharmacy, our pharmacy costs for the prior year were twenty-five to thirty percent. Pharmacy costs this year are only fifteen percent on a round twelve month basis. So that's improved, but our medical costs have jumped up a great deal.
Yeah, that's how to look at the previous, that five year, two thousand ten to fifteen. Because yet so far you could go back to two thousand and ten. And then is it a specific school or schools? Is there, is there any?
I'm not going to be able to pinpoint the school. I'll be able to pinpoint the diagnosis.
Which will be huge for us, you know, if you see, you know, a lot of the same diagnosis, that's really.
Right. And that could tell an environmental story.
If you work collaboratively a little bit, I might be able to.
Absolutely.
But you also need to remember that that two thousand to ten to two thousand fifteen was our good years.
And cost of goods and services are nowhere what they are, as they are today.
So you had very low high claimants those years.
But what was our incidence? I wonder what the incidence was, was our, was our, you're saying our incidence rate between two thousand and fifteen to present time is like the highest that you've seen? So that, so costs were lower everywhere from two thousand to two thousand.
Well, no, but we also didn't have, like, you would only, like, in those years, we, if we got one person or two people on stop loss, that would be a lot. What did we have this year? Eight?
Eight.
Eight people hit the hundred and seventy-five thousand. So in like two, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, you may only had one or two people hit stop loss. We had eight hit stop loss this year. Then you have, how many are over a hundred thousand dollars in claims?
I think fourteen, if I remember correctly.
Right, so you, so back then, you only had maybe a handful that were hitting over a hundred thousand dollars, maybe three, four people.
Yeah, I mean, you had, you had some high claimants, but they weren't as high as they are in the last two years.
They didn't jump out at you back then like they used to?
Yeah, like, like, the numbers are big numbers, hundred thousand dollars on a monthly basis in high claim.
Our insurance was going really well.
I remember.
Until we got to about two thousand fifteen where it just went haywire. And usually what ends up happening is when you're self insured, you would have like a bump like every five years, seven to seven years, where you'd have a bump in the road where you'd have some, something would happen and you'd have high claims. Then the next year it'd go back to normal. The problem is that over the past four years, it just keeps getting worse. It's not readjusting itself. And we're the only ones who seem to be experiencing this.
I always tell our clients that if you're a self insured plan, you're going to win eight out of ten years. Two years you're going to lose. Those losses may be really big, except that you've lost now four years in a row. It's time to get out. All right. I'm sorry to deliver bad news, but in the same token, given your good news, we're going to stop the bleeding going forward. Okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Rob.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Rob.
Any more questions for Rob before Rob goes? All right.
Thank you, folks. Have a great night, get home safe.
Thank you so much for coming. All right, we will move on to item B, which is special education. Are they using?
Yeah, I'll call it up and the paper's right there.
So as we discussed last time, if everybody remembers, does it educate everybody on special ed? We're going to start at the beginning to explain how this whole process works, you know, and build upon it every month.
Can I, these guys look glazed over from insurance. I prefer have them stay, but can they go?
Oh, yeah.
They're more than welcome to stay, but. Their faces during the insurance was more than I could. So what's going to happen is Darlene's going to talk about the process and then I'm going to walk you through the packet that's in front of you guys, so.
Okay, so last month, the representatives from the elementary school, the middle school, the high school talked about the S R B I process and how it's implemented at each level. Tonight, we're going to talk about the P P T process, which is the Planning and Placement Team process. And it involves the special education laws. Just click. There it goes. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, better known as I D E A, is the law that ensures a free and appropriate public education for students with disabilities. And it also prepares them, the law outlines preparation for further education, employment and daily living skills. The procedural safeguards are also under I D E A. These are the procedural safeguards, that's a whole other workshop. It's a thirty-six page document. But it's important to note that the parents have a right to have these procedural safeguards. They have to have it at the initial P P T and then once every single year. So it outlines the parent and the student rights during the whole process. The identification or the referral process begins with another component of I D E A called Child Fine. And Child Fine is, it requires the states and the school districts to locate, evaluate and identify students with disabilities from birth, ages birth to twenty-one, who may need early intervention or special education services. So the way that we do this is we work collaboratively with our preschool programs, our daycare providers, pediatricians, and then our S R B I teams at the school level and to identify students who may be in need.
Darlene, could you just explain like until twenty-one years old a little bit more to the board? Because not every kid in special ed goes until they're twenty-one, so maybe.
Okay, so under the law, we, students may can, under, having an I A P, they can receive services until the age of twenty-one. It depends on the student's program. Because we are looking at, during Child Fine, we are looking for employment under I D A. Employment, some students may go into employment when they graduate. We, some students may go to college if they're, you know, if they're ready for that. But then we have other students who may require transition services and they can stay on with us until the age of twenty-one. It depends on, it depends on the individual's program. Does that answer your question?
And I'll go through it a little bit while I get to the funds.
Okay, also, we have the Birth to Three Program, which is available to families who have infants and toddlers and who have developmental delays or learning disability, or any disability. This program is designed to individualize programs for parents and families to get some services, but mostly resources. It has changed over to resources. And typically, what happens is after, when these children turn three years old, they come to our preschool program. And we, we enter them usually on their third birthday. Then you have parent referrals or school referrals, which can be made either when a parent seems, has concerns about areas of need for a student or a school team has concerns. And the referral process begins with the paperwork being filled out. It's completed with, and it includes the areas of concerns, whether the student has been, we hope, the student has been in the S R B I process, what interventions were completed during that process and what were those outcomes. So we have all that information. The parents are notified and an initial P P T is scheduled. So the initial P P T meeting, the participants are the parents, an administrator. You have a special education teacher, a regular education teacher, someone from pupil services, which is usually the school psychologist. And then you have, you may have related service people there, speech and language, O T, P T, or anyone else who has information about that child. The, I'm sorry, the referral forms are reviewed at this meeting and any other data that is available from either the S R B I process, classroom teachers, it's all reviewed at this meeting. Then the P P T team must determine if further evaluations are necessary. So for example, if we have a child who has been in S R B I and hasn't made adequate progress, the team is likely to recommend that further evaluations are done. However, if you have a student who's been in the S R B I process and you look at the data and the student is making some progress, it may not be they're at grade level yet, but they're making steady progress, the team may decide to just monitor that progress and maybe meet at a later date. If evaluations, if the team feels that evaluations are necessary, it's important that the team design a comprehensive evaluation that touches on all areas of concern. So the, some of those assessments that may be conducted are cognitive evaluations, academic evaluations, rating scales for behavior, O T, P T, speech and language. It depends on the student. Once the evaluation procedures are designed, consent is required. Parent needs to sign consent. And from that time, we have forty-five days from the time of the referral to conduct those evaluations, report out on those evaluations and then have an I A P in place if the student is eligible. That leads us to the eligibility P P T. The participants are usually the same. There are some cases when there may be new people at the table. For example, if in the initial P P T, the discussion, let's say, an A T evaluation was recommended and the assistive technology specialist was not at that meeting, we would communicate to her that it was recommended for an assistive technology assessment. And then she would attend the eligibility P P T to report on her evaluation. So it may, the, the participants may change. Also, I should mention that, you know, parents are allowed to bring anybody to the meeting that they want to. So they can, you know, whoever, whoever they'd like, for support or for knowledge of the student. So the purpose of this meeting is to discuss and interpret the evaluations. However, we do send our evaluations home before the meeting. It's a very, this first meeting for parents is very overwhelming. It's a lot of information shared in one meeting. So we send the evaluations. So we send the evaluations, all the evaluations, home before the meeting. Um, and typically, our team members will call the parents, um, a lo- many times, our school psychologists will invite the parents in to review evaluations and answer any questions that they may have, um, so that they, they have a better understanding of what all of, all of this means before they go into a meeting. So, then, um, I'm sorry, after they, after we discuss the evaluations, then the team has to determine whether a student is eligible for services, um, special education services and/or related services. Um, the students must qualify under, um, one of the primary disabilities and it must adversely, uh, affect their education if they, um, to be eligible for, um, services. If the answer is yes, an IEP is developed and very simply, the IEP is a written plan that describes in detail the student's strengths, needs, current levels of performance, and the goals and objectives developed to meet their needs. Once an IEP is developed, it needs to be reviewed at least every year. And then in three years, every three years, we have, we reevaluate students to determine continued eligibility.
So go over the review as compared to the reevaluation, cause for some people, that's a problem.
Okay.
Every year you review it, but you only reeval- so just, I understand, but explain.
Okay, so every year, we have an annual review, okay? And the annual review that, it's the PPT meet, they meet, the team meets. We discuss again the student's strengths, their, um, weaknesses, what their current levels are, where, you know, where, did they master those goals and objectives? Uh, we discuss that and then we write new goals and objectives to keep, to move them forward with, um, in their program. Um, the reevaluation is every three years and that's where we conduct new evaluations because the state requires us to, um, to evaluate again to determine if they continue to be eligible for special education services.
So just one more add-on. A new, a child moves in with an IEP from another school system, what happens?
Can I review that when I go to my pages?
No problem.
Alright, so in front of you, you have a packet. Um, it wasn't able to be put up on the screen because you can't read it when it was up on the screen. So I gave you a hard copy of this and I'd like to walk you through this. So the packet you have in front of you is if the child's, we're gonna assume that the child has become eligible and this is what we're going to now be filling out, okay? It's twelve pages, so for four hundred and forty-eight students, each one of them have these twelve pages. Um, sometimes these twelve pages are written once a year for their end review. Sometimes they're updated regularly based on the needs of the student. But minimally, one of these packets is for every four hundred and forty-eight children, once a year, okay? So I'm gonna go page by page and if you have questions, as we go page by page, I would like you to ask them.
Before you, on the reevaluation, eh, every three years, but eh, if you deem someone that's maybe eligible to, you know, leave the program, that can't hap- in other words, it can't happen sooner than the three-year threshold?
You can revisit sooner than three-year threshold, but evaluations are required. So the minimum is every three years, but if we get to the table and say, you know what, they've made so much progress, you do have to have some sort of criteria though to exit them. You can't just exit them because we feel the need to exit them. You do have to have criteria.
This burns on, uh, the, the school?
You can move up evaluations prior to three years, but by law, we're required every three years.
And that can be requested by the team or the parent, either way.
Right, right. Um, so just going through this packet, um, as, um, Darlene had mentioned, the IDEA was in two thousand four. These packets have most recently been revised in two thousand eighteen. However, we're hearing from the state that this whole packet will be changing as of July first of two thousand nineteen. So I'm going to review this with you. This may not even be the case in September. Um, so page one is, the, the intent of page one is just to give you demographic information, um, about the student and the parents. It gives you the purpose of the meeting. It lists the members of the meeting and then it, you're talking about determining eligibility, you're writing down what the primary disability is. Prior to this meeting, an invite has been sent to the parent, talking about the reason for the meeting, so that needs to stay consistent. Whatever the invite said is what your purpose is when you get to the table. Um, and like Darlene said, there has to be an admin, there have, the parents are there. There has to be a regular teacher, a special teacher, and then any one of those related service providers at the bottom. Okay, that's the minimum amount of people that could be at the table. That's page one. Page two. Page two is the recommendations and the PPT summary. Um, the recommendations need to be very specific, so it's spelling out specifically the itemized list of what you recommended at that table at that day, okay? So for example, it could be eligible for services under learning disability. Getting three hours a week of resource time, consultation of the OT. Those are the very specific things that were recommended that need to be listed here on page two of the IEP. The Planning and Placement Team summary is, it says optional. Um, the recommendation from Darlene and I to our staff is to keep it simple. It's not a word-by-word transcript of what transcribed at the meeting, but it's more to encapsulate the discussion. Um, anything that can't be covered on the twelve pages, we try to write there. Any discussion that we may have, maybe some sort of disagreement, gets put on this page. But it's not a word-by-word transcription at all of what happened at the PPT. Alright? Page three is prior written notice. Prior written notice can be done two ways. After the meeting is over, you can talk about what actions you proposed, um, or refused, and you can give this actual, just this piece of paper to the parents at the meeting. Or if you don't give it to them at the meeting, you have five days to mail it out to them. There is a timeline. These are, um, state mandates. Um, these are not optional timelines. These are mandated timelines, so there's five days to get out to the parent. This form leaves, reads left to right. So for every action proposed, there was a reason for it, there was an evaluation procedure, and then the other, the little square on the thing is the implementation date. And that's just ten to fifteen days after the PPT, unless it was agreed upon to do a different timeframe with the parents at the PPT. Um, the same thing with actions refused, it reads across, so what do we refuse? For example, if a parent requests an outside eval and we said no, we would put that there. And then why we refused it and the evaluations that we had to support that. Okay? So this is kind of the parent summary when they leave the table of what happened in, on one page. Okay? Page four and five, this is the, the initial page of the IEP. This is the first page where technically the IEP starts. This is where the holistic view of the student is. So any assessments, observations, parent put input, student input, general ed input, special ed input, all gets put on these pages four and five, okay? So up top is the parent concern, so you tend to start with that. What are your concerns and questions that you have today? We address, we put them there and then we hopefully address them throughout the remainder of the meeting. And then we come back to them so that we can be, address them if they weren't addressed through anything recovered. Um, if you look on page four and five, you'll see that it's act, language arts, math, other academic, behavior, communication, vocational, health development, fine and gross motor, activities of daily living, and other. Okay, this is where you are putting all the information about that child. This now determines the remainder of the IEP, okay? So these pages define what specialized instruction will be needed, what goals and objectives will be written, and how we move forward with the whole IEP, okay? So, under the area, the first column here is where you're writing the current performance. So what's that child doing currently? Under strengths, you're gonna write how they compare to their peers or any special area of interest they have and how well they're doing in certain areas. Under concerns and needs, not every child will have a concern or need under every category. Okay, this is where it kind of finds down to what's required for specialized instruction. So they may be, um, all their strengths, they may have tons of strengths in math, but you know what, they may need, um, a decoding goal. They may have weak decoding skills. That would be listed under concerns and needs. And where, what's written under concerns or needs are the issues that are basis for the goals and objectives, which we'll talk about in a little bit. So after those are determined, you then have to write the impact. Okay, so if there's a concern or a need, there's an impact. So if it's weak dec- decoding skills, you would write student's level of decoding skills and reading rate make it difficult to complete independent reading in content area and require accommodations to assignments. So there's a statement there based on the concerns and needs that the team is determining for that child. Good so far? I feel like I'm talking fast. But Jake told me I ought to. And the next page is the same thing. So again, you're gonna have strengths in most of these areas, but you're not gonna have concerns or needs. Okay, and that all depends on the child. And again, some children may have needs in all areas. It depends totally on the child. That's why this is an individualized plan. Okay, so four and five was the current levels. From there, you move to page six. Page six is only in place after the child's sixteenth birthday. So if you're at the table when the child's fifteen and within that year he's turning sixteen, you need to fill out this page. And this is kind of what Darlene was talking about going to age twenty-one. Or actually, any child, but twenty-one, there's more on this page than other children. So you're gonna go through this and the, the student preferences are talked about. Um, the transition assessments are results that were on the page five, so anything assessments that were done are in the current levels, which could be, um, a career interest inventory. Um, we have the MECA program, which they do for, um, students at the high school, talking about what their likes and dislikes are, what their strengths are, hands-on versus kind of stuff, you know what I mean, that kind of stuff. Those are all on this page. Um, number four is if any agencies were invited. In agencies, we're talking about, um, Besby, if a child's visually impaired, Besby gets invited. If a child is, um, labeled intellectually disabled, um, DDS is invi- is invited, or BRS, Bureau of Rehab Services. So those are all agencies that the families have been hooked up with previously that could come to also give input on those students. From there, number five, post-school outcome goal statements. Every child has to have a minimum of two of these. So every child has to have A and B completed, C is optional, and that's if it's appropriate. And those tend to be the students that stay on with us until age twenty-one, okay? So you're writing a goal there that talks about how you're gonna help them get ready for life after high school, okay? So. Oops, I lost my place. Oh, and then down at the bottom is just what this course of study is that they're gonna transition with. And then seven is, at the age of eighteen, um, even though they could stay on till twenty-one, the rights change to the student. Okay, unless the parents have gone to probate and gotten, um, guardianship over their child. But otherwise, eighteen-year-olds come to the table, they're their own decision-makers. And we do have several of them at this level, okay? Any questions on that page? That page is not in K-fives, that we have no children at that age. Okay, so page seven, if you remember what we talked about on page four and five, the concerns and needs. For every concern and need, you're now gonna have a page seven. Okay, so you're gonna mark at the top of the page what the area is in, whether it's a academic, a social behavioral, independent, depending on where the need was on page four and five, and then you're gonna write a goal. So, given, I'm, I'm using Jack as, sorry, Jack. Um, given fourth grade math curriculum, scope and sequence, Jack will demonstrate mastery for math applications as measured by the completion of the objectives. So that's kind of the goal. Underneath that goal, we're gonna write specific objectives to meet that goal. Jack is gonna have a year, cause the expectation is that students to achieve in one year. And we're not going long-term. We're looking at a year because like we said, we're meeting every year. So what's realistic for this student to make progress in one year? Okay, so Jack will solve the word, a word problem correctly by reading a word problem and choosing the correct operation. Okay, so he's gonna read it and he's gonna determine it. That's gonna be part of his objectives to get to that main goal. They're very specific, they're measurable, and they're just written based on the needs. So ev- you could have one page of goals, you could have, we have sixteen pages of goals. Depends on how many needs are on page four and five, okay? You'll look over the, I'm sorry, I'm still on page seven. On the progress reports, where it says, um, report progress below. We do this four times a year. We do it November, January, March, and June. So they kind of align with the report cards. As they're getting the report cards, we're also checking on progress of their goals and objectives. So every specialized student gets progress monitoring at minimally four times a year, okay? If goals are not working out, we come back to the table. So that's one of those times where we will be back to the table because it's not working or it is working. They've mastered all their goals. We either need to look at how we're gonna move forward or we're gonna look at how we're gonna change it, whether it's more, okay? Questions on those? Page eight is the accommodations and modifications page. These have to be specific and appropriate to meet the needs of each child. So this page looks very different for special needs students as well. Um, accommodations are changes to how the student learns. So for example, they may need assistive tech to help them. They may need a slant board to work on for their writing. Um, they may get a copy of the teacher's notes. Those are accommodations. Modifications are changed to what the student learns, so those would be curricular changes. So instead of saying that he has to master the fourth grade timetables, we could write in a com- a modification that says he only needs to do facts for zero to five. So that's a curricular change, but it's part of his IEP and that's what he's responsible for. It's very specific to the child and again, all areas are not filled out for every child. Um, a lot of times, they're not all filled out for each child. And then down at the bottom is where we write consultation. So consultation with any outside providers, the psychologist meeting with the team on a monthly basis to talk about the child, that's listed on the bottom of this page as well. Cause we have to document each service provider, whether it's a consult or direct. And we do consult on the bottom of this page, okay? Questions on that? Page nine is for all students in grades three through eight and grade eleven. This is the state and district testing and accommodation form. A child that, um, participates in the state and district testing has the right to every accommodation or modification that they currently have on page eight, okay? They can't get a different accommodation or modification for state testing and if they don't have it on page eight. Okay, so it has to be something that they're using and have access to normally in order to get it on any statewide testing, okay? So that's basically that page. And again, some, not all grades do that because there's not testing in all grades. Page ten, it was basically, um, uh, to provide a place for the district to document that the PPT has complied with the IDEA and considered the following, with behavior, limited English proficiency, blind or visually impaired, and deaf or hard of hearing. So this is kind of another, it's the data that's collected from the state, but it's just to make sure that we covered it and had the discussion at each PPT. But again, a lot of those get filled in as NA for the majority of our four hundred and forty-eight students. The progress monitoring is what we talked about on page seven. This is where we mark if we do it more than four times a year or less than four times a year. Exit criteria can be one of three things. They succeed in general ed, they graduate, or they reach age twenty-one. So that's the exit criteria. And then since two thousand fifteen, the bottom of those for secondary transition has been on there. All of the documents that are listed there are located on our website. So we write on there that the parents can look at the website if they have specific questions regarding any of our trans, um, secondary transition. Okay? Page eleven. Page eleven can answer, I think, what Jerry was trying to ask, or someone asked about kids moving in.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, this is the snapshot of service provided by IEP. So if a student moves in, this is the page that we're gonna tend to look at first, um, to see what services they were receiving and what we need to implement now if they're here. Because even when a student moves in, this is in place for that student and we need to implement that continuing to move forward. We then meet about thirty days after the child's been in district to see what we need to fine-tune, but we implement best we can the IEP as it comes to us the day they move in.
So please don't take this question the wrong way. I've known you two forever and I love you two, but I'm gonna ask this cause it was asked of me. Do you contact the other towns and cities that these children are coming from? Okay, cause I've been told by certain parents known, of course, I thought, saying I've known the two of you guys forever, I know that's not, not true.
Sometimes it's difficult to, to get someone to talk to you.
Of course, yes, yeah, and which is what I.
Yes, and sometimes it's difficult to get workers, yes.
It's difficult to get paperwork from too. So sometimes the parent will bring this to us, which is beautiful.
Yes.
Other times, they will just say, he was receiving services, but I don't have a copy in the IEP. So then I, we have to contact that district and some districts are very difficult to get that information from.
Agreed.
But again, I, we, our secretary, who will do a shout-out again to Tracy Ball, is like a pit bull and she's gonna get that information for us.
She's even called the state to get the state to call the district, so.
Especially some of the larger districts, right, are very difficult.
Very difficult, which is, well, the answer that I gave, but I wanted to say it. Are we online?
Both people are watching.
Okay.
So this page, this page talks about the services and going. So this page, this page talks about the services and going from left to right. This is also a left-to-right. So you're talking about the specialized service, so I think I used the indication of reading. So the service is specialized instruction reading. The goals would be whatever the number is that coincides with the goals we wrote on page seven. How often we're gonna do it? So we're gonna do it one hour a day, their instruction one hour a day. The person responsible is the person that's designing the instruction. Okay? They're monitoring the implementation of it and they're reporting out on the progress. So chances are, the person that's responsible for the special ed services is a special ed teacher. We do not write specific names on here, and we write titles, because names change and could change throughout the year. But a special ed teacher is usually the responsible staff. The implementer could be a special ed teacher, it could be a parent educator, it could be a regular teacher, depending on what the service is. Then there's a start date and an end date. Where does that take place? And you'll see that there's four options at the middle of the page where it says instructional site. So is it in the regular ed classroom, is it in a resource classroom, a self-contained classroom, or is it community-based? And then there's five for other, but we tend not to use other very often. And then in the column there, if there's more description needed, whether it's a small group, individual, team taught classes, we list it there. Every service they get has that detail to it. Underneath related services will be speech, OT, PT, counseling, any other related services that they may receive. The only difference would be, and I don't wanna confuse you by this, if a child is identified as speech and language, their speech services are not related services, they're their special ed services. So they're on top of the grid. And it's just a matter of top and bottom about the hours, which I'm gonna go into next. You also have to list any classes that they participate in general in. So you would just write science, lunch specials, social studies. Wherever they are in with regular ed kids, it's listed there. You have more questions about their length of day, length of school day. Most of that's pretty consistent. It's a six-and-a-half-hour day and a hundred and eighty-two days a year. And then if there's special transportation, that gets put on here. The eight, nine, and ten are the mathematics that need to be done at the PPT. So a total school week for any kid except a preschool kid is thirty-two and a half hours a week. That's what you're starting with, is thirty-two and a half hours a week. You then take out any of the special ed hours which are on the top of the grid. So for the example I gave was the one hour a day. So you're gonna take five hours out, because you're getting specialized instruction for five hours. So you put five in that next box, and then you subtract it to put twenty-seven point five that people spend who do not have disabilities. However, if the site is regular ed classroom, thirty-two and a half hours, he's with regular ed kids. So that all depends on what's written on the top, is how you fill out this next little component. Sounds like a lot of work, but you really get used to it once you're in the swing of it. And invite you to somebody, I really can. And then you kind of just, we talked about extended school year. So the kids that are not going to recoup by missing two months, we offer an extended school year program for them. It's a four-week program. It runs Monday through Thursday. This year, it's running July eighth to August first. And they either come for language arts skills or math skills, or sometimes both, depending on what their needs are. Okay? So really, this is the page that's, like I said, this is what we look at. This is what we kind of base our whole program on, and what happens here or there. Page twelve is not part of the IEP, but it's required data for the state. This is what Darlene talked about. We are required to begin services, and I think, actually Donna has talked about this on numerous occasions, the day they turn three is the day we begin services. Whether it's September, October, January, or March, that kid has to come to us on their third birthday. And if it's not, we have to report why they didn't start on their third birthday. And that's kind of some of this reporting in here. So I know I kind of whizzed through this. I will answer any specific questions, or you can ask me questions later, and I'll shoot them off the answers to you, whatever you prefer. But that's, this is if a child is eligible. This is what has to go into it, this is the thought process behind it. So it's not like really us making them special, because there's a process to this.
And this is after you've tried the other interventions.
Correct.
Level-one interventions, level-two interventions. And those have not worked, then you move on to this one.
Correct.
So if you're at a level-one intervention, where they're just getting some extra reading help, you're not going into this.
And we've actually pushed back, Darlene and I have been in meetings where we don't have enough data to say that they're that far behind. So we do push back and say, you know what, do the SR, go to SRBI for a few more months, get, bring us back some data then. But again, when they move in, they've already come, this has already been determined when they come to us. So when they move in, the twelve, they're coming to us with twelve pages. We then do the reeval, but the initial evaluation, everything has already been completed.
Right, and by law, you have to accept what they've come with.
Right, and we can't say we can't do it. We do the best we can and then try to get to the table as quickly as possible if there's something that's way out of whack that we're questioning.
Does anybody have any other questions? I know it's a lot to take in.
I know, it's starting to take, I was trying to like speed along, but I...
I was just gonna ask, the programs, is that dictated by the parents? As far as, you know, where they're placed to say, we can offer something, is it, how's it determined where they go for different services?
Outplacement?
Yes.
Okay, outplacement, it's determined, again, we go through the process and we say, you know what, this can't be done in district. This is more than what we can offer here. So then we look at what other programs offer. So we sometimes have one specific program that's, you know what, this is gonna be ideal for this child. We refer the parent to go look at it. We write a referral letter to that program and ask them to do an intake or a meeting with the parent. For the most part, it's the parent with the school team determining. Other times, we've offered a couple of programs, you know what, I'm not sure what the best fit is yet. Let's go look at three programs. So we'll give them three options, and they'll go do it that way. And then it's kind of determining which is the best fit for the time that the parents feel comfortable in, the student, you know, also goes for the visit. The school gets a feel for the student, and then sometimes they'll say to us, you know what, this is not a good fit. So it's taken right off the table. So it's done a lot of different ways, depending on the student.
Labor-intensive.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's good for the kids that they're getting what they need, but as you're going through this, I'm just thinking, this is a lot of time by a lot of, a lot of staff.
And it's, I would like to say they're about an hour, if I did an average, but we do have some that go longer than an hour. We do have some that we can finish in forty-five minutes. If we're doing avows, they tend to go over an hour, just because we wanna go through the avows, and they have to be documented in the IEP.
Yeah.
So it all depends on what kind of meeting it is.
Yeah, I was thinking of that when you...
Hour minimally is...
Yeah, when you were talking about the minimum amount of people that have to be at the table, you're not just tying up one person and the parent, it's...
And if this, we tend to have our school sites be our administrators. But if they're reporting out on avows, they can't be both people. So then you would have to have like, and unfortunately, at the elementary level, there's only one principal. So if they're in meetings for an hour, then they're buildings, you know, they're not doing other stuff in the building, so...
And you said we have four hundred and eighty-some...
Four forty-eight right now.
Four forty-eight that have this, let me go through that.
Correct.
What's total population?
Roughly thirty-two hundred.
It's about thirteen percent.
Including three-year-olds, like you're incorporating three, possibly twenty-one, three through...
Three twenty-one.
Three twenty-one.
Yeah.
But I believe three-year-olds are in your total population as well. I would have to double check that, but I believe so.
It is.
Yeah, I think so.
Anybody have any other questions? We'll build upon this next time. We kind of wanted to start at the beginnings for everybody to understand exactly how special education works and start at the infancy stage of how it starts to roll up and where we go the next place.
And if the state uses new form, maybe there'll be less, and we can share that with you.
That would be nice, wouldn't it?
That would be awesome if it was less forms, but I'm having a feeling it's not less forms. What?
Unlikely.
Yeah. We can hope. Alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane Darlene.
Thank you, Jake, for being patient, you're on next.
Here's the grand finale.
One of our, one of the policies on review tonight is the graduation requirement policy. So Jake came a couple of months ago, I think with Julia, and did a great presentation on how they're preparing for the new requirements that include twenty-five credits and then a very specific distribution of those, of those credits. So Jake's gonna give us a little bit of an update tonight.
Yep, so you've seen the first part of this presentation already, so just skipping back through the class of 2023. You can see here, if you just, for a reminder, that the state's changed the requirements to have to have twenty-five credits. So we've been talking, what does that look like here at Massey? We're currently at twenty-two point five. You've seen this also. This is the current state requirements. These are the new state requirements, so they're going from twenty to twenty-five. We're right here at twenty-two and a half right now. So we need to move from twenty-two and a half to twenty-five for the class of 2023. That's incoming freshmen. So I left you with these four action items for this year, so this is where the update begins. So change the program of studies for the class of 2023, saying that they'll need twenty-five credits. We've done that, that's online. Include the 2019-20 program of studies that class of 2023 must carry six credits. And I have some slides on that. And investigate, determine the best way to fulfill the twenty-five credit requirement. I'm gonna show you that. We're still in the process of working on a new daily schedule, and we have a three-year rollout plan for that, and we're in year one. So more to follow on that. I'm gonna hold on that one tonight. These were some considerations. We've taken a look at these, a lot of these are gonna be in the works for the new schedule. But I just wanna point to this second-to-last bullet point I presented before, which is that the class of 2018 of our two hundred and ninety-three graduates, they averaged twenty-six point three credits. So I just think it's really important to know, yes, we're moving to twenty-five credits, but by and large, students are already graduating with over twenty-six. So it's not necessarily in the categories, but I just want you to know, you can get it in during the school day. So here is the new course distribution we're looking at. And this is in the program of studies for the class of 2023 and under review, policy review. It says pending board review in the program of studies. So we're looking at ten credits in humanities, one of them being this world language credit. And if you remember, we spoke about this a little bit last time, you can grab that credit in middle school. So a student who elects to take no world language whatsoever at Massey, but took it in middle school, can apply that one credit, but they'll have to take another elective in the humanities department. I don't think we're gonna have a lot of kids that are gonna fall into this. We may never have a kid that falls into this, kids take world language here. But just as a point, we're fulfilling the state requirement there. We're going to nine credits in STEM, must-pass Bio One, that's the same. So it's three in science, one change here, we're going to three in math, we're currently at four. But we're adding in three STEM electives. So that gives us some flexibility with students that have a more challenging time to get through four courses in math. They can pick up some extra elective courses, which would be in the STEM category, meaning that we might be able to do some more tech ed, mathematical-type courses with the kids. And we've looked at, we actually, you've already voted and approved one that's coming in for next year. And so we feel really good about that change of the curriculum for those kids, too. PE is still at one. You can see that health now was at one point O. And that's changed, that's an addition, that's up. We still have three other electives. And then right here, it's a one-point-O credit mastery-based diploma assessment. There was nothing there before. We have currently a point five, we have to move to a one-point-O. So if you add that all up, you're gonna see that you're gonna get to twenty-five total credits. So we're consistent with what we believe in, we're meeting the state requirements, but we do have to go up from twenty-two and a half to twenty-five.
What type of classes encompass arts for point five?
So, you know, we have studio art courses, ceramics. We would also be able to apply our course, band, music, any of those will fall under the arts.
He's performing arts or fine arts.
Yep. So the, another change we wanted to talk a little bit about was this move. To be a full-time student here at Massey, you currently have to carry five courses. So obviously, five times four is twenty. We want kids to get up to twenty-five. And so we think it's gonna be really important to move our credit requirement per year to six courses per year. And I wanted to show you the data today for the rest of DIRD-B. And you can see, this is Massey right here, we're requiring five courses per year to be full-time for twenty-two and a half. But if you look at the rest of the DIRD, you see some schools are already at twenty-five. Some are pending board approval at twenty-five. Some, there's nothing that I could find online, they're at twenty-one. It doesn't matter whether you're at twenty-one and aren't quoting your twenty-five, you're pending board approval, or you're already there. We are the only school, if you look here, that's anywhere near five. So you feel pretty comfortable that making the move doesn't make us an outlier in any way. It really brings us up to speed with the rest of the DIRD. What does that impact look like? I want to sort of break it down a little bit for you, moving to six classes, what might that look like? So here's our current eighteen, nineteen. So this is going backwards. So our current class in ninth grade, we had fourteen students who were carrying less than six classes. So we required five, when they had fourteen who were at that, that were below six. And we looked at this number, most of them were in specialized programs or moved in during the school year. So they're coming from schools with different requirements. Tenth grade, you can see the number drops as they get in line with what we're doing for coursework. Eleventh and twelfth grade, that's where currently students can opt to leave at the end of the day. And so you can see, you would think there'd be a large amount of kids...
End of their school day.
End of their school.
Yeah, end of their five classes.
Yes, yes. You can see here that we only have twenty-seven kids that were carrying less than six courses. And of those, eighteen of those kids were carrying five point nine. So that's their regular courses plus the two PE requirements that we have for eleventh grade. They're carrying five point nine, so we're only asking to try and get in point one more to get to our six. And here's our current twelfth graders, we do have fifty-five of them that are carrying less than six. But of the fifty-five, twelve of them are less than or equal to five. But forty-three are at five point five courses. So we're asking for an extra, really, you're looking at a half-credit here for, if you're looking at a current twelfth graders. I did run some numbers quickly. We have on the order of a hundred and thirty-eight individual courses a senior can take. So I feel pretty comfortable with a hundred and thirty-eight individual courses, and that's not even counting multiple sections. That's different course offerings a senior could take. At a hundred and thirty-eight-plus courses, I feel pretty comfortable I can get fifty-five kids into an extra half-credit and have realistically, I think, no impact FTE-wise. That's sort of where we're at now. So it's going to policy now for the twenty-five credits, and we're asking to move to six courses to be full-time. So really, look at six times four is twenty-four, plus your one capstone. That brings it to twenty-five.
It's not really optional. It's a state requirement.
Right, it's a state requirement, right.
Yeah, twenty-five's not an option, but we're trying to do, it's the best way to get it laid out.
Whether they like to take six or not, it's not optional.
Jake, I know you don't have a crystal ball. Roughly, how many FTEs are we looking at?
In terms of this increase, if we do it? I really don't think we're gonna have any impact, and if we do, it's gonna be, I think, extremely minimal.
I think the only concerns we have with FTE has less to do with this and how many kids are already at five and a half. I think it's, the concerns are, A, our world language classes are getting extremely popular. Most of the kids are taking a world language. So we're seeing really tight squeeze in our, especially in our Spanish and our French classes. Yep, and we're sharing staff currently with the middle school. The health piece, you know, we're gonna have to configure that. That's, you know, right now, it's point two-five, the kids take a one semester, two days a week with, you know, with the health teacher. Now it's going to a one-credit course. That's something we're gonna have to continue to study. If we can use some of our existing PE staff, all of our PE staff in the district is health and PE certified. And then the other piece is the biology. You know, not next year, but the following year, moving to a biology. I think most of the schools in the whole state are going to biology first year. And worrying about that bubble and being able to manage that.
But should that hopefully is a short time, just as we transition to Bio for everyone. You have some kids who are already taking Bio as a sophomore currently. So we've got a couple-year bubble there. So there may be a slight impact, but I think it's one of those that we'll negotiate and navigate, and then it'll go away.
Really, there's some great opportunities for kids within this schedule. We've got room in some of our CTE classes, you know, we're gonna see enrollment increases in the arts.
I was just trying to prepare the camera again.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I was wondering, yeah.
Yep.
So just like, so for under, can I go back to arts? Because I'm thinking of a child who does not, or does not play, play music or does not like art and can not stand art. Does like business classes fall under arts or no? Or are they're gonna be required to have to take a art class when the kids have no interest in that?
Well, like, does videography fall under art, Jake?
So putting, those fall under STEM.
Okay.
So in terms of the arts classes, we have, you know, woodworking and lots of different versions of that that are, that are going down. Did beautiful job redoing that area. Chorus, and we actually could absorb most of the kids that have credit just in chorus classes, you know.
Right, I'm just thinking of kids like, and I'll give, use my child as an example. She didn't play an instrument, she did not take an art class, that was not her forte, it was all academic.
She's gonna make you a wonderful ceramic.
Doesn't matter, she's ready in college, we're all good.
You're gonna love that stool she brings home.
But all I'm saying is that there are kids who are not interested in the arts. And by high school, you know whether or not you're an arts child, if you're not an arts child. So we've been, so I'm just kind of trying to anticipate issues. Are we gonna have pushback on saying, my kid is not, never gonna take this, why can't they take an elective in something else like a business class when they know they wanna be a business major? Let's just as an example. Why are we forcing them to take an art class when that is not their forte? And they wanna take business classes instead and you're forcing them, which now affects them getting into, let's say, the Business Honor Society, which is important for college and getting into college. I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Well, you gotta, the students have to be well-rounded too, because when they go to college, they're gonna take lots of classes they don't wanna take.
But you're kind of sort of forcing, a, a, a kid in who's in elementary and middle school, you're making them take all those classes. By the time they get to high school, they know what their forte is and what they're not. So why are you trying to get them into an art class that takes away something that they could be taking for college?
Ask the state, right?
Could our art and performing arts teachers?
No, it just, we're, we're clustering that ourselves. It's just ten credits in humanities, we're the ones saying, we're wanting them to do five in art.
I think the, I think the state, I think the, if I remember correctly, the statute says, ten or nine in the humanities, including the arts.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the least we could offer is point five, which is, I think, why we said point five and not one point oh. But it's, I think the statute's very clear that it says it has to be in the arts.
Right, so this is broken down as, fit on the slide. It's pretty clear that when you read it through, it's saying, including the arts. Point five was the least we could require a kid to take and still meet their twenty-five credit requirement.
So can we look at our classes innovatively? That would satisfy the child who's.
Well, and that's what I'm kind of trying to say.
I, I know, that's why I brought it up.
Like, because, like, because, you know, like, you know, we could be affecting children's path in other areas, you know?
That's big for us, I know that.
Right, so you could be affecting a child wanting to take business credits, getting in Business Honor Society, putting that on a resume, knowing they're gonna be a business major in college, because you're forcing them into a point five. Or going, you know, going, okay, well, I can't take this AP class because I need to take a point five in pottery. You, you know what I'm saying? I'm trying to avoid.
I do.
You know, because from a student and parent perspective, I'm like, that's great that you want point five, but in a realistic world, my child's gonna sit there and draw a stick figure because they don't like art.
No, I do, I do, I know what you mean. I don't know how, how else to handle it in the state, I mean.
Right, I don't know.
I think the range of the offerings is part of it too. I think when you look at other high schools that have big arts programs, they're a major draw that the kids wanna go into. And I think one of the things that's unfortunately happened is ours has dwindled over time. And I think, you know, one of the things that can come from this is it can be a way to rebuild some of that where kids want it though. You know, but I think to your point.
For those who want it, but for those who don't, you're gonna have some, a child sit there being miserable.
But I think to your point though, Donna, I think there does need to be a range of offerings too. And if you've got a range that addresses a broad needs, a broad set of interests, then you're finding a good spot. You know, I mean, I think one of the things, you know, you look at some of the media-based courses that are offered, some of them will fall into the arts, you know, depending on the high school. So, you know, I think as we assemble this, we've gotta look at the kinds of course offerings we have so that we're drawing kids in.
Also, don't, don't forget, we're looking at a new schedule. A new schedule is gonna, if we, if it lines out the way, we're probably, we're physically gonna be offering more courses to kids, more slots for courses in a cycle.
And maybe that addresses it, I'm just saying, in our current format, so a child who has to give up in an eight-period day, you know, a point five, that's a huge thing for some of these kids to take something, a course that they know that they're not wanna be in.
Right.
That's all I'm trying to say.
Sure, and that's a key driver of the new schedules, to try to find ways where we're not, you know, to reduce those conflicts, which are always a headache at the high school level. How do you provide the maximum number of slots so that you've got fewer conflicts?
Right.
And you're gonna love that ornament that they bring home.
I guess it doesn't affect me whatsoever.
He's gonna paint lines on that.
Does that affect me? I'm just, I'm just going, I'm just going, I'm just trying to play with the parents in the community and the kids are gonna say, based on, my child wants to go get into a top college, we don't care about an art class when they don't wanna take art.
But we don't have kids now who are coming to us saying they can't fit things into their schedule.
And I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that, you know, a kid, so all I'm trying to say is, how broad is art because it, does art include business classes if kids wanna do that?
No, those are CTE courses.
Right, see, so that, that could be an issue. That's all I'm saying, is right now it's broad because you take six electives and your six electives could be, you know, in anything, you know, so you have kids, and I, and maybe this is a study to see, how many kids actually, how many students actually go through some sort of arts class that falls into the definition of arts for, like, for a grade? So like, if you're seeing that half the kids are not taking an art-related class and they're taking, you know, business-related classes, that could, you know, provided the schedules change doesn't happen, that could be problematic for families.
I'm not sure if we're gonna have a choice about, I understand you're correcting, that point five is the minimum requirement?
Yeah, and the second, I mean, we, we did get, you know, some issue with our scoring that came back, access to the arts. I mean, it's, it's right out there that we need to increase our access.
Yeah, our school performance index, we, and I, I, I kind of agree with you, Donna, what you're saying. And I, I get frustrated that we get dinged in our school performance index by the state for access to the arts. The access is there.
Right.
It's that kids.
It's the kids don't wanna take it.
Aren't necessarily, you know, accessing it, it's not like they don't have access to it.
Correct, they just don't want to access it, you know.
Could you credit, Dar, could you credit them the arts class from middle school like you could do with the world language?
It's really specific, the courses that you can credit, and it's largely things like world language. And there was a math for certain kids, so sure, it's not gonna.
Those were the two categories for the middle school, yeah.
Yeah, it's not gonna be the elective course.
It wasn't gonna be, but again, if the schedule changes, you know, but, you know, we may need to look at other things. You may need to have a half-year point five course, where right now chorus is a full-year course to satisfy some of those kids who are just gonna take chorus because they're forced to. And that's the problem, you're gonna be forcing kids into classes that they may not necessarily want or desire to take, which, you know.
I think you're gonna have some of that no matter how you do this.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But you can see from a kid's point of view, being stuck in a class that they have zero interest in and don't wanna be there. What are the ramifications of that? Do we now have kids who are gonna be truant? Or we have kids blowing off classes because they don't wanna be there because they're miserable? And this is not your problem, this is the state creating this problem.
Well, it will be my problem, they're truant.
But you know what I'm saying?
See, my problem quick.
You can have kids blowing off classes because they're like, I don't, I'm getting stuck in woodworking because it's the only thing that works and I don't wanna be in woodworking, I have no interest. So I'm just gonna blow off this class because I don't wanna be there.
Donna, Donna, in high school, I just wanted to be at lunch.
There you go.
That's a good class, that was great, I gotta.
No, but I'm just saying, you know what, the state is, could be possibly creating some ramifications that are unintended consequences because they're forcing kids to take something that they may not necessarily normally take.
And I agree with you, and I, there's always those challenges in the range of courses that we offer, but I think the inverse is also possible, that you're gonna have some kids who never wanted to take this class and showed up and, you know, this is kinda cool.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean?
No matter what we put in front of them.
I would agree.
It's a tough, it's a tough balance.
I mean, I came from a, a school with an extremely robust woodworking program. And, I mean, the last year I left, we ran eleven sections of woodworking one, woodworking two. And there's not eleven sections of woodworking kids in Darien. You know, they're taking it because they're interested in it, it was fun. It was a, it was a lot of ways to break in the day because of the amount of AP classes they were taking. It was socialization, they were learning to use something so different. They'd never used their hands ever before. And also, they used it as a feeder program into a pretty robust CAD program after. And I don't know that the kids would've been interested in CAD had they not had woodworking one and two. So to your point, I think that what's gonna happen is, it's gonna cause us to reflect a lot on our current curriculum, our current course offerings. And when we do that, I think we're gonna be able to find, hopefully, hook kids into the interest levels. And we'll shape the courses we have so that kids hopefully don't feel like they're there, you know, wasting time. I feel pretty confident, we have the teachers in place to do that. So it's a process, it starts with the policy and the credits, and then we start working through the curriculum, so.
Yep, thanks, anybody else?
Great job.
Thanks, Jake.
Thanks, Jake, thanks, Joe.
Sorry, I just have to now, I'm out of sleep mode. All right, we have no old business, we will move on to new business. We have two policies up for first review. The first one is our policy thirteen thirty, which is the use of school facilities. And the second one is policy sixty-one forty-six, which is graduation requirements, which I think Jake has covered pretty well. So Joe, would you like to talk about the school, use of school facilities?
Sure, yeah, we just look to update the, the facility use policy. Biggest change was, you know, making sure, you know, word kinda got out that, word got to me that we had our Parks and Rec renting space at St. Jude, I think that's kinda crazy. So probably the biggest change to this policy is that after-school events are scheduled in our facilities, that the town, including the Parks and Rec, has first right of refusal. So that's gonna require the Parks and Rec director to meet with either the athletic directors at the middle and the high school and the principals at the elementary schools, you know, kind of seasonally, to schedule their buildings. The rest of it was just some, just some language cleanup, just to kind of reflect kind of what's going on and looking at some of the pricing rates for custodians. And I'm gonna, we're gonna bring that probably ahead at the next meeting, the, the fee rate schedule. That usually gets brought up every, every June. But the biggest piece of this was giving the town the first right of refusal to school facilities. They shouldn't be, they shouldn't be renting space.
And I just wanted to thank Joe for all his work on this one too, because there were a lot of players he had to interact with to make all this come together.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, anybody have any other questions with this one or graduation requirements that we kind of covered already? All right, so this is first review, so these will be up for a second review and a vote on our next meeting. We will move on to executive session, where we are gonna go into executive session for the superintendent's evaluation. And I'd like to invite the superintendent to join us. Do I have a motion to move into executive session? Thank you, Jerry, second, I saw Joe already first. We will be dismissing from there, we'll take no action and nor will we come back here afterwards. All righty.